Good evening, welcome to the March 17th West Claremont School Board meeting. Mr. Ramona, will you please take a roll?
Mr. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
Ms. Samborn.
Present.
Mrs. Spencer.
Present.
Five, yes?
Thank you, please join me for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the motion to adopt the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
Done, move.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley, is there any discussion? Little call, please.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Ms. Samborn.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Pat.
Yes.
Five, yes?
Moving into recognition.
Good evening, members of the board, I'm so excited today to talk about our Momentum Award winner, so I'm gonna ask that, today in the gallery we have the BLT, the Building Leadership Team from each of the buildings, so I'm gonna ask Summerside and Holly Hill to come up. So we are proud to recognize the building leadership teams of Holly Hill Elementary and Summerside Elementary. Both BLT teams led their schools to be awarded the Momentum Award by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development. The Momentum Award is given to schools that have improved their performance index by three or more points from previous years Ohio State Report Card and received a value-added progress rating of four or more stars. This accomplishment shows the outstanding improvements and achievement and continual growth that are occurring at Holly Hill Elementary and Summerside Elementary. So for Holly Hill, we have, I don't know if they're all here, but Megan Frankel, Angela Best, Tara Hector, Heather Copley, Angela Priest, Lauren Hensley, Katie Miners, Bridget Grace, Lisa May Ellis, Kim Reese, and Principal Josh Young. And then from Summerside, we have Lisa Sheffey, Shannon Flaherty, Katie Stechschulte, Carrie Loupec, excuse me, sorry, Monty Wilson, Shelley Miller, Patsy Bruner, Beth Dessenbrock, Joey Basada, Mindy Sabo, Joe Stahl, Natalie Edwards, and Lisa Courtney. So please join me in giving the hand.
Holly Hill, I think this is your third time getting this, right?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, that's a pretty big deal.
Just ten, like, ten.
Yeah, just that, like, yeah, let's say ten.
A session, a table.
You have to put somewhere that it was St. Patrick's Day.
Well, I don't, I don't think it would be a reach, I think people would notice that. Well, speaking of St. Patrick's Day, this is not lucky leaders here, these are, these are people that have worked their tails off to accomplish really rigorous outcomes for their kids, and they, none of them, make an excuse about their population. They, they believe they all can make students learn, and that they're the ones who can make that happen, and their strong beliefs, plus all the learning that they've done, all the teamwork that they've accomplished, better collaborating with one another, has shown really impressive results. And I know this is the second, or no, third time, I believe, that Holly Hill has received this award over the last probably eight years, so it's, it's a big deal, this is a big deal award, so congratulations, you guys.
Congratulations. I think at this point, we're just gonna take about a ten-minute reception, just to kinda go out, celebrate, and then we will be back in about ten minutes. Thank you, welcome back to the West Claremont School Board meeting, we'll start next with the student athlete leadership, leadership team video.
Michael's like, "Don't jinx us."
The student athlete leadership team, known as SALT, is taking "We Care" to a whole new level at West Claremont High School.
Um, SALT is basically just a big group of our athletes here, and we are just working to unite, and basically become closer with one another, unite sports teams, and also just make an impact on the school and definitely our community, and doing like a lot of fundraisers and things like that, that, and helping, like, we are doing like gift drives and things like that, that are helping students- and helping like, we are doing like gift drives and things like that, that are helping students in need and also just making sure that, like, the athletes are really contributing to our students and our school that aren't athletes.
This is the second year of the club and fifty-six student athletes are part of it this year. The students range from freshmen to seniors.
I'm striving to be better as a person and also an athlete and really it helps me also be a leader on my team, not just in the school, but it also plays an impact on how I'm viewed like on my sport team and how I can contribute to my teammates and like build into them.
A hundred percent. Uh, just to give back to the community, you know, especially me growing up in the community, it means a lot. And the fact that I can just give back to everything and, you know, influence younger students is huge for me because that's, that's what life needs to come to nowadays.
Um, for me, I wanted to be in SALT because I think I was like more of a selfish player and I wanted to be able to like help myself, learn how to be a better teammate and be a better athlete. And our SALT leader, she helped us like be able to just be able to talk about, like, just everything in general and just have our own experiences to be able to be a better athlete.
So far this year, SALT students have found unique ways to get involved. They've cleaned up trash at the stadium after fall sports. They've written teacher appreciation letters. And they gave back to some of the areas most vulnerable, including a toy drive at Christmas time, and most recently, a stuffed animal throw at a basketball game to benefit foster children.
I really like the toy drive that we're doing right now because it gives other families opportunities that came up for Christmas to uplift others and like it helping with our basketball, like more people to come in and watch the game and helping with our community as well.
I think we should reach the littles. So little kids or middle schoolers or elementary schoolers who want to get involved in sports, but are too scared or don't have a community and people to lean on, I think SALT would be a perfect opportunity for that.
It should go further and we should influence it more in our middle schools and our elementary schools because if we can influence it here at the high school already, that shows that the little, the smaller kids, middle school and elementary school will be able to, you know, get to have a life outside of it and they can look forward to going to high school at West Claremont because I think that'll influence our, all of our sports teams to be better than what they, they are. Not saying that they're bad or anything. We're pretty, we're a really good school to go to play sports. But to say that you go to West Claremont now means a lot, but if we go to West Claremont in the future with how SALT is going, it, it'll mean a lot more to the state and to, to the country.
So Kelsey Kelly is the softball coach and she also helps out in athletics in a million different ways, but she is leader of the SALT team. And just listening to those students, I'm impressed with them the most because they are scripted. They're just being interviewed and what they're sharing about giving back, um, taking care, you know, developing leaders from elementary all the way up to high school. Um, clearly they can see a big picture and they see a purpose in their life. That's not just about, you know, dialing it in Monday through Friday. And I'm, I'm just so impressed that, um, the athletic department, uh, James kind of started this two years ago with Kelsey's help and how they are taking leadership development so seriously inside of their department because clearly, um, it, it will only like ripple out and, and make a difference in how we work with one another, treat each other and, and our outcomes ultimately. So, so thanks for that. Um, very, very well done, Becky.
Okay. Looks like next is public speaking at the school board meeting. It says, "Visitors who wish to address the board are asked to state their name, address, school, or organization. Remarks must be addressed to the board and should be brief. Three minutes until the point. Speakers may offer such as objective criticism or suggestions regarding school operation or programs. The board will not, will not hear any personal complaints of school personnel or against any person connected with the school district unless those com- complaints have first been addressed through the individual's department or administrative, uh, involved." It looks like we have two rich firsts.
I don't know if it's good or bad that, uh, you know me by my first name.
I'm not sure that's on.
So first of all, I wanted to again thank, uh, Mr. Romano for being easily accessible. I've, uh, probed and asked quite a few questions. We've had quite a few conversations in the last few weeks. Um, so thank you for that. Um, one thing that you guys have on your agenda for night is the, uh, the FTE report, the Full-Time Equivalent Report. Um, I'm just questioning why we have as our head count for teachers, uh, a number of four hundred and sixty-four, but the board has four hundred and thirty-eight point eight approved and four hundred and thirty-five point eight are occupied, showing three are available. How, how do we have three spots available when we have four hundred and sixty-four, but we're only required to have four hundred and thirty-eight? That seems to me like there's twenty-six difference. And then in total, you have nine hundred and seventy-two as your head count with only nine hundred and twenty-two as what's been approved by the board. So why do we have fifty people more than we're actually supposed to have or what are in the contract or in the, the board, uh, requirements? Um, also tonight, you guys have listed on your agenda that you're gonna talk about, uh, the transportation contract, but there's no document that's listed on the, the agenda for people to see. I'm just kind of wondering where we can go to view those proposals. Do we need to do public records requests to get those? Um, do we always go with the lowest bidder? What's the criteria for the bids? If the contractor meets the criteria and they're the lowest bidder, is that the one we pick? What's the selection process for that? And then is there any other public meeting, uh, of the board where things like this are discussed, the public can come and attend and not have to come to maybe this venue and ask for that or to find that information? And then also, and I didn't do it tonight, I apologize. I do live at eight sixteen Massachusetts Drive. Um, why, why is it that here in the board meeting, we have to stand up, give our name and our address and tell you where our school affiliation is and all those things? But when you have a town hall meeting, we're allowing people from outside of the West Claremont School District to come in and attend and be part of those meetings and part of those discussions. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You ready, Mr. Romano? Next up, it looks like is Scott Baker.
Hello, Scott Baker, four five four Oden Drive, Holly Hill. Good evening. I am the father of two children who currently attend Holly Hill Elementary and have for nearly seven years now. Holly Hill has always been a small family-centered school where teachers and staff pour their all into each student. We've always been proud to say our children attend Holly Hill, but recent events has left us questioning the moral standing of both the school and the district. The Claremont County Library sends individuals to the school as part of their Three For Me program. On multiple ti- occasions this year, they have sent an inappropriate individual into the school. This individual is male with facial hair, makeup, and women's accessories. This is completely unacceptable inside of our school buildings. This individual is free to do as they wish on their own time, but every adult who enters the school owes it to the students who conduct themselves in a proper manner, including the way they present themselves. We send our kids to school to re- receive an education not to be conditioned to the things such as this. I have spoken to many people over the past several weeks regarding this matter and not, and the only thing they have in, had in common is that not one single person supported this in our schools. This is something we should, this is not something we should be normalizing for our children while they're in school. Our children should not have to ask the questions such as, "Is this a man? Does he think he's a girl? Why is this man wearing makeup at a school?" This is not in the best interest of our children. We've attempted to address this at the building level, but the response of, "We do not have the authority to impose dress code and appearance regulations on an employee outside of our organization," is not an acceptable response, as well as the suggestion to provide alternate educational services to our children during this time to avoid interaction with this individual. Our children should not have to have their education interrupted because someone doesn't want to have a difficult conversation to prevent immoral and unethical things from happening inside our school buildings. Administrators have a duty not only to educate, but to protect the physical and mental well-being of every student who enters the doors, and I hope this matter will be addressed accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Looks like we are moving on to the consent agenda. First up is the Human Resources Personnel Agenda.
Good evening. In front of you is the Personnel Agenda for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. On the agenda today, we have the retirement of Lynn Hatfield, Special Education Teacher at Amelia. She, she's in her thirty-fourth year with the district. And Rita Reynolds, the Cafe Manager at Holly Hill, who is also in her thirty-fourth year in the district. So we wish them well on their next adventures. Uh, on the board agenda, we have the resignation of two teachers at the end of the school year, one pair of professional aid and one third shift custodian. This agenda also includes the proposed hiring of one secretary at WT Elementary, one pair of professional aid, and two custodians. On the agenda, you, we have the proposed transfer of Joe Stahl from Instructional Coach to the Assistant Principal at Club beginning in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And Joe and his family are, are here tonight, uh, so we were able to celebrate them. Uh, on the agenda also includes the contract renewal of Greg Rose, a middle school assistant principal. This agenda, uh, we have the proposed approval for supplemental contracts for multiple lighthouse team members, multiple advisors, multiple coaches, assistant theater director, and athletic contest worker. Also is the proposed approval for multiple unpaid leaves of absences and cafeteria substitute and multiple s- school volunteers and student teachers. And finally, in the work beyond the contract section, have a proposed approval for payments for prorated cashier stipend for Courtney Dean. She temporarily filled in as WT, uh, Elementary Secretary, um, when Mary Ellen Robinson passed earlier this school year. So this concludes the review of the Personnel Agenda submission for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Foltz. Next up is West Claremont High School Education Rising National Competition Overnight Trip.
Good evening. This evening I, um, am requesting approval for the Educators Rising National Conference. This is the national conference for our Teacher Academy Program and, um, this is for students who at the state level qualified to compete at the national level. And so we're super excited that our students have the opportunity to participate. We have seven students who have qualified, who will be traveling with their teacher, Michelle Dorman. Um, the conference takes place in Orlando, Florida, um, June twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth. Um, students are participating in fundraising activity. They're hoping to cover the trip costs, um, like around five hundred and eighty dollars and their fund-raiding, fundraising activity, um, is designed to help them raise five hundred of those dollars themselves. So they're anticipating the cost of the trip per student will be around eighty dollars. Um, they will then meet up with other organizations across the country who will also be competing at the national level. Are there any questions?
Yes, just one slight thing. Um, there are eight meals, meals for the, uh, students, but there's no cost for those eight meals unless it's gonna come out of the nine hundred and twenty dollars.
It's all include, it's included in that, that five hundred and eighty dollar amount.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. Thank you.
I just want them to go hungry.
Right, me either. They wouldn't do very well, I don't think, uh, without food. Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, item seven point zero three is request for approval of the minutes. The first of the minutes is for the meeting, the regular business meeting that took place on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Item seven point zero four is request for approval of the regular business meeting of March third, two thousand and twenty-five. Item seven point zero five is request, uh, for approval of donations as presented. I will read those briefly. Um, Lisa Barter donated a hundred dollars for lunch balances and a book at Withthamsville Tabasco Elementary. Amanda Lukenheimer donated a hundred and twenty dry erase markers to Withthamsville Tabasco Elementary. Oddgo Inc. donated a thousand dollars as a scholarship for West Claremont High School. Amanda Lukenheimer donated fifty headphones for two second grade classes at Withthamsville Tabas- Tabasco Elementary. David Crook at School Store donated ten dollar Walmart gift card to Withthamville Tabasco Elementary. Homage LLC donated six fifty-dollar homage, homage gift cards to Human Resources for Teacher Recruitment. Big B Coffee donated two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, proceeds from the Dine to Donate fundraiser to West Claremont Hole-in-Orchard Assistance Fund. Lowe's donated fifty-two plastic buckets with lids to Merwin Elementary Safety Team. Merwin PTO donated items to fill lockdown buckets to Merwin Elementary Safety Team. Chick-fil-A donated one thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, which were proceeds from the Dine to Donate fundraiser to West Claremont Hole-in-Orchard Assistance Fund. Donado's Pizza donated seventy large pizza boxes to Amelia Elementary for the first grade science capstone project. West Claremont Middle School PTSO donated a laminator to West Claremont Middle School. West Claremont Middle School PTSO donated daily treats for testing to West Claremont Middle School. And Withthamsville Tarts of Price donated five hundred and twenty bracelets and five hundred and twenty stress balls for Withthamville Tabasco Elementary Incredible Kids Day Event. Those were the requests for donations as I just read. Item seven point zero six, our request, uh, to approve authorization for the Superintendent Treasurer to negotiate and execute contracts as presented. There's one listed in this section and that is, uh, for, uh, for two power school, uh, for software for special education. Item seven point zero seven is request for approval of purpose and budget statement for this current school. Um, and the item, or the, the activities listed are for the, uh, Willoville Principal's account, for the middle schools where everyone belongs, and for the high school prom, um, the revisions that they have requested. Item seven point zero eight are the financial statements, bills paid lists, and investments. Um, and those are the attached documents that are there. And if I may, if it is okay, um, to explain the FTE report that is listed on there. And so the FTE report, um, does list, um, the head count, which are, are bodies basically described. There is an FTE, or Full-Time Equivalent, count which, uh, summarizes a full-time equivalent of the day. So it may be a whole eight-hour day or it may be a half a day to it. So that FTE count will come up less than the, the, uh, the head count, which is like a body count to do that. And then there are the positions that, uh, both payroll and Mr. Foltz and his department reconcile continuously through payroll and at the end of the month, the head count, the FTE count, and those positions that are filled versus unfilled to do that. So we, we did clean that up a few we- few years back to make sure that those codes that were there do equal the EMIS filing that we have to report to the state. So kind of a check and balance internally and then also which, with what we file to the State Department of Education to do that. So on the
And, and the avail- I don't know if you explained, the available means that there could be positions that we need that we just weren't able to find staff to fill.
Correct.
So it's maybe substitute at this point. So I just wanted to clear that up. And there's a note on here too that explains why the head count, it's gonna seem, it's, cause it's not just, it could be that staffer in more than one position.
Correct.
At the time as well.
To do that.
Yeah.
But that's good question.
Thank you for that clarification.
So that were the, the, the consent agenda is items seven point, uh, zero one through seven point, okay, zero eight.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Rea. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chubb.
I have a question, Mr. Patton. On this power school from the Director of Curriculum Instructions, um, is this just for one particular school building or is this for the entire district? I was trying to figure this out.
The entire district. The entire district.
Okay. All right. So you won't have to do this agreement again until three years from now?
Yeah, we're transitioning from another provider to this. So we're moving from one platform to another platform.
Was that remind?
No, same goal.
Okay.
And it's for preschool through, through grade twenty-three. So it includes, um, any student with a disability, five oh four. It also includes, um, like gifted, um, WEPs or DWAps. Like it's really any special program, five oh fours, any of those things are included.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. I'm fine.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Thank you. Roll call please. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes?
I believe we're moving on to eight oh one. This is a resolution to authorize the superintendent and treasurer to negotiate contracts for the replacement of aging network equipment. This equipment will be replaced with federal E-rate funding. E-rate funding is on a five-year lifecycle. This application year will be the final, final year of those five years. So if we don't use that funding, we lose it. So interestingly enough, we have to get the proposals back before we know exactly which projects make the most sense, because until we know how much each one will cost, we don't know how to best manipulate them or choose them to utilize that funding. And so that's where we are now. We've received those proposals back. We're reviewing them all, comparing them and contrasting them. Then Mr. Romano and I will sit down and go through and figure out what's the best utilization of the funding that's available for the projects that we need. But then we have to file contracts with the federal E-rate program before our next board meeting. And that's kind of why we're asking for that permission for Mr. Romano and Mrs. Adams to be able to negotiate those contracts, because we won't have time to come back again and, and have that discussion yet again.
So is this like a grant that you're receiving for these E-rates?
Yes, the federal E-rate program's been in, in place for many years, and it's on a five-year cycle. So yes, it's federal funding that they provide to schools and libraries to keep their wireless networks and their internal networks kind of up to, up to par.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so you've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Samborn. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes?
So item eight dot zero two is another resolution authorizing the, the execution of a letter of intent to purchase Chromebooks. So we have done our RFP at the board's approval. We have gotten, gotten those proposals back. We are still vetting the final credentials of, you know, the best bidders. But we have found one that we think is going to be suitable. Once we're, once we've completely vetted them through the manufacturer of the device and their references, the other school districts they've worked with. We have not worked with them before, but their pricing is actually lower than what we paid last year, which is amazing to us. The challenge is we need to issue that letter of intent so that we can commit to the purchase before tariffs might go into effect and raise prices on us considerably. So that's why we're asking for the right to issue the letter of intent.
Okay.
So is this just for the Chromebooks for fifth, ninth and...
First, fifth and ninth.
Okay.
Yes, first, fifth and ninth.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So you've heard, yeah, so you've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Samborn. Is there any other discussion on that? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes?
Next up, must be Mr. Vafada.
Excuse me, good evening. On February twenty-fourth, we issued an RFP for transportation services. And we received three proposals, three different companies. We picked final two, and Mr. Romano, Mr. Gethard and myself interviewed both companies extensively. Then we settled on a preferred vendor. Then we began negotiations, Mr. Romano, myself, with an attorney and the company. Those negotiations were finished prior by Mr. Romano, an attorney. And I believe we have a solid contract. The basis for the selection was not just cost, it was also references within the state, within the state, services they can provide to West Claremont, experiences with West Claremont, willingness to adapt to a, a study that we're conducting this summer through ODE on transportation services for our district, which could change routes and potentially cost. So we vetted each company based upon that criteria, and I feel confident we have a solid contract. Any questions?
Well, I would just add, Dan was still working on it before he walked in here. So it was, it was mostly finished on Friday, but a few details in the last few hours, so. Is there anything else you would add?
No, so the, and, and I do apologize that it was not placed out on the agenda prior to, right before the board meeting. But the, the contract and agreement is out there. The resolution is out there with the authorization. There are six items, which I did post out there, that although we have a meeting of the minds with it, the language is not set for the occurrence of, which kicks in some language, has not occurred. Those six items are listed. Those will be handled either by an MOU or an amendment to the agreement when they are settled.
Okay, thank you. So you've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Is there any other discussion? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you.
There's no action tonight on the statement of facts, but what I wanted to have Mr. Romano do is take us on the website so that people will know where to find them, if anybody wanted to review them or share them. So we're going to tag-team this. First, you will go to the bond information site. And if you look at the bond issues on the right, you see the word "statement of facts." Do not. I can't see it from that place anymore. I keep forgetting that I'm old and I can't see. So on that is where you find the one-pagers that we've created, and we've been sharing those with you every meeting. Then if you go down, the statement of facts is listed there in the, in the kind of presentation deck. I think the only misconception that I've heard this week really is just still question about the middle school, thinking that it was fully renovated. You know, Clough was fully renovated. It was taken down to its bones and built back. The middle school, that's not what happened. There was a bridge that connected the two, two sides. There were some updates in the kitchen, and then there was paint and, and...
And the floors were waxed.
The floors were cleaned. So it was, it was more of a, I would call it a facelift more than I would say like a renovation in the same way that Clough Pike was renovated. They're vastly different in their approach. So I just wanted to clear that up. And then a second thing that I wanted to clear the record on that I've misspoken about. We did some research today that, that I had wrong in my mind from, from something that I heard when I first got here. I had referenced to you guys that the bond issue that was from the past, when we had Amelia and WT come up, had started as four schools plus athletic upgrades, and it failed multiple times. And by the time it passed, what my statement was is that it was for the same millage. That was incorrect. It went down. They went down and pretty much cut it in half. The millage was still very close, but the cost of the project was like, I guess it was half, it was like sixty thousand to thirty thousand.
Fifty, yeah.
So I misspoke on that, thinking I had, I had the information right from the past. It was very, very close millage. My, my ultimate point that I was trying to make is just the, the timing of, of this project and the cost today are probably going to be the, the best cost we're going to see. And that, that's kind of part, part of what, what the rationale was there, why that, that millage was very, very close when it started as a bigger project and then just ended up being the, the two buildings. So I wanted to correct, correct that for the record. Is there anything else you would add?
Well, what I would add to it, and you know, I think that part of that is under this section of "why now." Annually, because we are members of the, of the chamber, I attend and others, when they have the opportunity, attend the economic forecast update. And if you have never attended that, I would recommend that in the future. They do bring in an economist in. It talks at a macro level globally, talks about where our country is, where the state of Ohio is, and then it brings it down to a micro level of Claremont County and the different locales within the county. And as I sat through that sixty to seventy-five minute presentation in my head there, and I do have the PowerPoint which I can copy and send to you, there was a lot of affirmation and confirmation about the third bullet point, about a boys inflation-driven cost increases. And as the economist went through his presentation, again, it was just affirming that, yes, projections are that costs will increase, construction costs will increase. But the time is right in two thousand and twenty-five, okay? If you're going to do anything, and I think that was his message clearly to the businesses within the community, that if you're going to do some things, or even it's a residence, if you're going to buy, now's the year to do that as you look forward. So somewhere up the road, if I find the right way to adjust that in the statement of facts, there's a secondary source, which really was that economic presentation. I don't know if the chamber puts that online or not, but and that same economist group is the same one that has done the chamber's presentation for, for several years now. They are accurate. Their accuracy rating is pretty high, so just to add that to it.
And if you could go back to the website? The other thing I wanted to point out to everyone, because I, I think this has been important when we do our community meetings. If you go back to the bond page. Yes, right there. If you go down, under the, the one pager key facts, there's a chart. Keep going. In this chart, and there's directions there that, that tell you how you can figure out what the impact to, to you personally is. So it has the income tax on one axis and the property values on the other. So you can find your number. And we've had those pages at different community meetings that we've attended recently, and people find it very helpful to use. So I would recommend everyone, you know, taking a minute to look at that. Because it's not as straightforward as, as just a regular property value-only assessment. So I just wanted to take a minute. There are lots of videos on that site. Dan has explained a lot of financing one oh one, questions that come up. I, I would say that, that other than the, the misinformation around the middle school, I, we haven't really gotten many things in on Info at West Clare. It's, it seems to be very light. And so my hope is that we all just continue to share the facts, because when I, when I do read comments and see things online, it does seem like there's a lot of misinformation. And so I would just really recommend it to, to drive everyone here to the facts. That's it for that. For, do you guys have any questions or comments around the statement of facts or anything that you're hearing? Because if you're hearing things out there that you want us to correct in our communications, we do have a newsletter coming out that will be for, is it April? It'll come out in April, so we're working on that now. So if there's anything that we could correct that you guys are hearing, or anything you would like us to emphasize, we'd be happy to do that.
The two things that I'm hearing, kind of three. One is a comment that I'm hearing is that the cost wasn't what they thought it was going to be to them, the middle school.
Oh, you mean like when people look at the chart?
Yes.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've noticed that, too.
Yeah, so I've, I've heard that in the community. The second, thank you for clarifying the, what was done at the middle school, because again, there's a conception that it's been redone. And again, I lived that building. It wasn't redone. We knocked down a couple walls in the cafeteria, you added your hallway, took down the canopy. So thank you for clarifying that. It, it was not redone.
Well, and clarify for me, because that's one thing I just thought of, is that the window units, were they there when you were, or was that something that was added?
They were adding that. Another thing that they added, which I believe, I could be wrong, because I knew just enough to make me dangerous, that it was a grant, but they went and changed all of the lighting, so they had the old fluorescent, and we changed to the LED for other costs. I believe that was, I believe, a grant.
Yeah, that was pretty popular around that, that time, I remember.
So, you know, they did that part, the parking lot, that was done. But again, that was done for a different reason. So, yeah, I mean, the, the roof has leaked when I worked there, and it still leaks.
Yeah, and, and we've invested a lot in it. I mean, since I've, in the seven years I've been here, we were bringing a roof project back every, every year.
And the other question that I do hear is, one, where would the elementary go?
Yes.
And what are you going to do with the other buildings? Some of the homeowners in Merwin are questioning, what are we going to do with that?
Yes. So we don't have location for the new elementary decided yet. It, it's under analysis right now, so we don't, we don't have anything to bring to you. We're looking at the population, where it's expected to fall, and what would make the most sense. And so it's a, it's a conversation that pairs with not only the enrollment, but with transportation, and what's the most efficient, effective place that makes sense. And so that's, that's what's being studied. And then the other one was the, of the other buildings. Merwin and Holly Hill, at this time, what, where we landed is that they would, they would stay in place. They would not be demolished immediately.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Are you going to put anything in those buildings, like, you know, have like a church, rent a part of the building or something like that?
Honestly, we haven't gotten that far in, in thinking. I mean, there are, there are rules that we have to follow.
There are rules we have to follow, and I, you know, before any decision is made, you know, if, if, if they come down. But I think you look at two things. One, alternative purposes that we would need as a public school district, so what would those be? Two is if you go back and think about the charts that Dr. Foltz provided on the enrollment growth, keeping one of those buildings intact, in reserve, just in case population, the student population starts to grow faster than projected, or at certain points in time, you know, there, there's space that we need, that is a backup for us. So I think those are the two considerations that we have to have as we go forward.
Another thing would be nice to have a Boys and Girls Club at West Claremont. Or have Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, you know, Cub Scouts, Brownies in our, in one of our buildings, you know?
Yeah, and one of the things that, when Dan and I go around to different community meetings or clubs, we, we are making it very clear that we have a possible project, so that we are planning ahead. And if there's ever any joint ventures that people want to do with us, that we don't have a shovel in the ground and say, oh, I wish we would have thought of. So we're, we're trying to get the word out in any which way we can.
Okay.
All right, well, those, those are helpful. We'll continue to emphasize that. And I think another piece that, that gets underemphasized in some of the communication we've sent out is that we're already overcrowded in the elementary. It's not like we're, because you see our charts and you see the growth, we're, we're expecting thirteen hundred more students by two thousand and thirty. But we're overcrowded now. So this is not like a, we're going to sit and, it's a sit and wait kind of game, or, or just these kids are coming. Like, but based on the, the projections, we are expecting that, that enrollment growth, and we have troubles today, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then for my comments, I'll just add that we have a town hall this week. Right now, I think we have a little bit over fifty participants signed up for that. And that's at six to eight o'clock at Amelia Elementary. And that's really all my comments, so we hope everyone could come out and be a part of that. That's our last physical town hall that we're having this year.
Six to eight o'clock at Amelia Elementary.
Amelia Elementary. Oh, did I not say that part? Thank you, Michael, for keeping my, it's this Wednesday. It's this Wednesday. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Romano?
Thank you. Item eight point zero one, if I can explain what that is, it's authorization for the treasurer to issue requests for proposals for underwriting services. So this is in preparation, I just have to catch myself instead of saying if, but when the facilities issue in May passes, and looking at the timeline of when we would need to do some things. And so it, you know, the anticipation is, is that even this summer, we would start some projects, whether it's the additions on the two elementary schools or other improvements that are needed. In order to do that, there's a team to issue the bonds, which is not just the school district, it's our bond counsel and our financial advisor. Those two authorizations are annually provided at the organizational meeting. Go back and, and look at the authorizations that were provided under, one was under legal counsel, that was the bond counsel, Dinsmore, and then the other one was under the financial advisor, which was Bradley Payne. Those are in place. You typically do not address the underwriter or the municipal securities underwriter until you look at the marketplace and are ready to go with that. And then you take proposals for that. I don't know what was done in the past, but as, as I go forward to do that, I don't select those on my own. I go through a process of requesting proposals. We evaluate those. We evaluate those. Need be, we go to the finance committee and review that, and then we come back to the board to approve those underwriters, okay? So this is the initial step, just for that, that fourth team member, right? The district, bond council, the financial advisors, those are in place. The fourth one would be the underwriter. It could be a lead and a co, just depends on the proposals, it depends on what we look at the marketplace and happening. But we take those proposals, evaluate those with an internal team, and then provide a recommendation to the board for those, for that underwriting services, okay, to do that. So that, the request is just to ask the board to allow us to go, issue those requests for proposals, so that they can be submitted to us for evaluation. So item 9.01, it's request for authorization for the treasurer to issue requests for proposals, RFPs for underwriting services.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sub move.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes. Thank you. Okay, the last item, and again, I had posted this a little bit before the board meeting, too. It is really to, tomorrow morning, up in the wee hours, we're going to drive to Columbus. It is the annual legislative day. The superintendent, myself, and Ms. Samborn went last year. I think it was pretty eye-opening and enlightening in the morning, and then we met with the legislators in the afternoon. Mrs. Spencer is joining that contingency for tomorrow. So in the morning, we will meet with other school districts in kind of a general session to have that presentation. Superintendent has scheduled meetings with Senator Johnson and Representative Byrd. We're trying to coordinate a meeting with Representative Schmidt, if we can do that at that time. But part of what we want to do is convey our message and our story, and what our priorities are specifically on two issues. One is House Bill 96, and that's the state biennium budget that has been talked about and is there. And then the second one, some input in our message regarding property tax reform. And I, you know, we've made those statements in the past on what they are. I also have that in a handout to you for the board, if you need that. But what I'm going to briefly do, and I'm looking around, and Mr. Gephardt's not here when I talk about time on presentation, but what I want to do is briefly show the board kind of what the fiscal impact is of House Bill 96, and then what that, where that leads us to, and some advocacy efforts with our state legislators as we go forward. One of the immediate things I did upfront when House Bill 96 came into play, because all you really get is pages and pages and pages of language, and then you ask the, you know, the authors of the bill for what does it really mean as far as the simulation. We got a simulation from Ohio Legislative Services, which gave us some top line numbers. And then what I do is go through a secondary thing to work with the financial consultant to say, okay, how, what does this mean to us specifically? How's that calculation formed, which sometimes we don't know. But we go through the formula calculation and say, okay, do our numbers, as we calculated, does that correspond to what Ohio Legislative Services did? And although you can't read these numbers up here, this is, I guess, my evidence to say, yeah, hey, they, we are in, you know, within less than 1% of what their calculations were, so we're kind of on the same page of what it means. What this page is showing to you is a summary. It's not the detail. This is the summary of what it kind of means to us. If you look at the first line, and it says core foundation funding, so what the governor's bill, or House Bill 96, does in those calculations, it compares what we currently would get to what's projected to receive in FY '26 and FY '27, given that bill. The red line is looking at the core funding of the fair school funding formula. Currently, we get 23, just under $23.5 million. If the bill were to be put in place under that formula, the core funding would be $15 million in '26, $10 million in '27. So the core funding goes down substantially in both of those years. Within the fair school funding formula, there is a provision, and the reason why I put this in there, because that provision is at risk right now. That provision is called a temporary transition guarantee. In simplest terms, what that means is, when they put the formula in place four years ago, it says, okay, for school districts, we're not going to give you less than what we provided to you in FY '20, which was really for us equal to FY '19. Okay? So that we're going to keep you at least flat. We've been under the guarantee. We've pretty much stayed under that guarantee during the past four years, except one year where we bubbled out of it, and then this year, we went right back into it. So the guarantee just tells districts like ours that, hey, we're not going to give you any more money. We're going to keep you flat. So regardless of inflation or other things that happen to you, whether we tell you to spend money a certain way, we're not going to give you any more money.
And no matter if you have students that add to your population or not, it's the same amount, no matter how many students come in here.
So if you look at the core funding and that guarantee, they really offset each other, right? So where our core funding went down from 23 million to 15 million, our temporary transition guarantee went up from under $1 million to over $9 million. By the second year of the biennium, over $14 million, okay? You'll hear me say the comment once in a while, we are really deep into the guarantee. That means that, and what drove us there was valuation increases. So when local capacity goes up, and local capacity is, the two major components are the property valuation per student and the adjusted gross income per student. The 2023 valuation increase, okay, in the part of the formula said, hey, you are more wealthy, so locally, you pay more of that core funding, and the state will pay less. Okay? Except for the guarantee. I want to take it all the way down to the line that basically says, the House Bill 96 reduction of the guarantee phase in provision, and it says per OLS, which is Ohio Legislative Services. So the simulation projection we received that says, in '26, if this bill goes through as authored and proposed, our reduction is about $700,000. The difference then between FY '26 and '27, or cumulative reduction is $1.4 million from '26 to '27. Over the two years of the biennium, we are down $2.1 million, if that stays the same. Okay? And just these next three slides highlight that, that's the core foundation that gets reduced. The temporary transition guarantee increases, okay? And then because of the provision in House Bill 96, they're saying, hey, we're not going to eliminate the guarantee, but we're going to start peeling it off. We're going to start lowering that guarantee, okay? So you're not going to receive what we received in FY '19 or FY '20, okay? It's going to be less to do that. The message to the, to our legislators are, hey, given that, you're giving us two messages with this data in hand. We already spent in the lower portion of the state, we're in the lower 16%. We on average spent in FY '24, we spent $13,600, or $13,600 per student. If you compare that to other groupings, whether it's urban, suburban, or rural, which when people ask, well, what are you, we're really a blend of all three of those when you, when you look at, we have some components of all those. Officially, they designate us as a suburban school district, but if you look at us, I think we have qualities and attributes of all three of those. When we compare our $13,600 to similar school districts, we're still below them. When we compare it to the average of the state, we're also still significantly below that. If you average that, it's about $2,000 per student. May not seem like a big number, except when you consider if we have 20, 21 kids in a classroom, that's $40,000 per that classroom, okay? If we spend all that money, that differential in there. Okay, that's a significant number, okay, to do that. All right. So again, you go back, hey, you're reducing your funding to us from the state. We're already spending less than 84% of the state, right? Bottom 16 means 84% spend more than we are. We give them our history of what we've done since 2020, which was the last local levy passed, and the reason why I think that's important, because that's the last time we were under the guarantee there, that we went to the community and said, hey, help us sustain what we're doing, okay? We didn't, we didn't ask for anything additional. We're going to sustain the current services, okay, and let us go forward. We said we wouldn't come back to the community prior to 2024. Because of valuation increases, we were able to extend that out. So yes, we fully admit, when our values go up, we do get more funding, and we use that to extend out when we need to come back. That is there. We did get federal relief money for COVID. We spent that with the upward and onward made investments. And the big message is out of there is, is the district took those investments for one sole purpose, improve performance. Okay? And I don't have to go over that, the superintendent's, and the team has told you what we've done. And it's created great momentum for this school district. So because of the momentum, because of the performance, because we know that our local taxpayers, okay, are paying the majority of this bill, okay, we...
I don't know if I can get a, if I can get some more?
Oh.
What? No, I can't, I don't know if you can do it.
A gentleman.
There it goes, okay. I guess one other component is, if you look at our district over time, we've changed. Our student population has increased within economically disadvantaged over the last decade and a half. We've increased in special ed, specifically in students with more significant needs. We've increased in English language learners, and the diversity of our population has also increased. So those, that is a reality, you know, that, that we've faced and done things with. As Mr. Foltz has told us, and again, this is the message we want to tell to our, our three legislators, is our population is growing, okay? The black line, as Mr. Foltz discussed it, even if we just look at the students that we have, and we do a cohort of, here's our current students as they move from kindergarten to first, from first to second, et cetera, there is that student population growth. The blue line says, well, on top of that, if, if not if, but when the subdivisions come in, when there's holes in the ground that a house is going to be built on top of, we're going to get more, more students in our school district, okay? The COVID is going to happen. It is happening, and those students are coming with that. Just as the superintendent said earlier, we're kind of out of space already, and so when they come, we need a place to put them. I mean, keep in mind, and this is what we told the legislators last year, the three, we had to close open enrollment. We closed open enrollment, not because we didn't want other kids to come into the district, it's because we needed seats for our own children. Okay? That was, that was an important part. The General Assembly does not want us to close open enrollment. They want that open. And in fact, in the fair school funding formula, there was a penalty early on if you did that. And because of our situation, that penalty did not come forward to us as we went forward. So these next slides, we really kind of explained our funding cycle and what it does to our cash balances. What I want to get to is this one slide is, and again, we can speak to ourselves, but we can also speak about the other school districts in Claremont County, as those legislators represent them, too. Of the districts in the county, only two have an increase, and they're minor increases. Everyone else, the formula does not work for them, and as the guarantee goes away, they also have a reduction in state funding. One of them kind of stays flat over the next two years. Doesn't really increase, increases one year and decreases right back down in the next year. If you look at those percentages, our school district significantly, the state funding of that core gets significantly reduced.
Just for perspective, seven years ago, when I first came here, it was about 50% that the state was investing in West Claremont. So you see the change to 2.4, down to 14.5.
It's just, you know, a debate saying certain things, but it's like, hey, when you see these numbers, what's the message from Columbus? What's the message to our community? And is it, is it that we're, because we're quote unquote wealthier, we should be paying more of our share? At the same time, then, okay, there is a property tax reform and different reform bills that are out there that says, okay, we got to do something with that. All I know, and for 40 some years, is school funding is based off what the state will give you and what you can get locally. When you tinker with one, you're really messing with, with whole school funding. Local property tax reform is about school funding. Yes, it is about property taxes, but it is, it is also about school funding to do that. So we are, in essence, kind of, I don't want to say attacked, but both of those revenue sources are really, you know, coming under strain.
Well, and it's, it's just very easy. Schools are very easy targets for the first thing that people think is, well, they're just not managing them anymore. And that's, that's just commonplace in every single community.
So just some comments on local property tax. We are at the 20 mil floor. The 20 mil floor, simplest way to describe it is, as tax rates go down, the year after the equalization was put in place, or the last property tax reform in 1976, the year later came back and said, hey, that rate can't go below 20 mils. We're at that 20 mils. The inside millage, which is 10 mils distributed to all the overlapping governments, we have 4.2. Of that 4.2, 3.7 is to our PI fund, which really is, has been designated since the high school was built and the middle school renovations and others, okay? That's been designated to pay off the debt for that. All right? So that's already identified. One of the pieces of legislation wants to put the 4.2 mils in our district back into calculation of the 20 mil floor. That's putting us at risk on paying that debt off. Okay? People need to know and understand that. The district has two emergency type levies. One is the emergency levy of 2020, and the second one is a continuing substitute levy, which was done in 2009.
The substitute?
Yeah, the substitute, or the 13, 8 and 13 maybe it was. Okay? But that one is ongoing, okay? Those two emergency levies, there's legislation that says, hey, can't treat them as outside the 20 mil floor anymore. You got to put them inside, and they have to go towards that calculation. What that means, they already are fixed dollar amounts. What that really means is, though, that when you put them against the 20 mil floor, it changes that formula so that the 20 mils, quote unquote, whatever calculated there, it comes off the floor. So there is no growth then built in. Okay? Our bio millage is at one, which that's pegged to a debt schedule. That will continually go down, it will continually go down as valuations go up. Our levy history reveals that there's difficulty in passing continuing levies. That's why usually a continuing levy was proposed, didn't pass, and then it went to an emergency. That's why those two emergencies were there as we look forward. Okay? So last line, local property tax pressure is brought about by no additional state funding. You know, I think the realization is that if our revenue for the state is flat, even anticipated increases in our expenses such as inflation have to be covered 100% locally. There's no state sharing in time for our district. We have to cover that with local dollars to do that.
I feel like I want you to take this slide and then highlight every single one of them, where there's a legislative bill that, that, that can wipe it right out. Because this is what, this is how we survive.
Yeah. So, and I think, you know, one of the things that I saw when I try and look back, I always think, well, here's where we are, and let's go forward. But when I look at the 20 mil floor, and I can't, you know, tell you exactly when that came in for the school district, or when the inside millage was moved and things like that. It, it wasn't done, or it's not to the point where... It wasn't done, or it's not to the point where we thrive, but as much as survive. Okay? And you have some of these changes in there. It takes, you know, it takes our survival mode almost out, okay, because of that. So, you know, that is important to us. So what do we advocate for when we talk to them? And again, I went through this because this is a message, and if there's other messages you believe we need to provide tomorrow, then let us know. Okay? So the top priority, which may be different, you know, from other school districts, it may be different from some of our organizations, whether it's the school boards, or the Superintendent's Association, or the Treasurers Association, we want to keep the guarantees in place. There's a, there is a movement to say, hey, update the formula, the fair school funding formula with the cost inputs, because they're not fully in there. Our position is, okay, that would be great, but if you do that, remember how deep we were into the guarantee, how those numbers accelerated, increased much, it won't bring us out of the guarantee. So even before you do that, our advocacy is keep the guarantees in place. There was, it was intentional back four years ago to try and keep them in place, and our request would be that that happened, that there be an amendment to keep the guarantees in place. The other aspect of the formula is, within this calculation, there's really two components. There's the core funding, and then there are categorical programs. So special education, disadvantaged students, English language learners, gifted, career tech, what am I missing, Ellie? I think those are the five big ones. Okay? Typically and historically, they were outside the formula. You got additional funding for those categories of students. When the fair school funding formula came in place, they were placed inside the formula. So your, so your guarantee, you know, was there in place. Even though our student populations, as I showed you on the other slide of how more diverse we are, even though those areas increased within the formula, it showed that we got more money, but it never got us out of the formula working in total. It never got us out of what we received in the prior year. Okay? In essence, what that did is shifted money, you know, from this population of regular students to these specials, okay, without any more money. So our request is go run some simulations. If we took the categoricals outside and treated it differently, would we be able to grow and get more dollars for when those populations grew to do that? There's a statement of reevaluating the threshold costs. That is really for access costs for special needs students. That calculation is done every year. We do that calculation. There's people that track all those costs for the students, and we can submit that to the state to get reimbursed for that. More and more students, more and more school districts participate in that now. Although the pot for that has increased, because more districts participate, we receive less money. Okay? On average per student. So we're requesting that you look at that. The request with the state is, there's an emphasis on leaving local property tax provisions in tax rather than addressing those. Look at doing targeted relief for individuals, not just in our community, but statewide. We do understand that that valuation increase hit people off guard. It hit individuals that are in a valuation growth home that maybe their income does not support that. And so there's, there's ways to target that. There's ways to provide relief for that. That would be the advocacy that we would do. It's not, not to play around with either parts of those formula, i.e. local and state. Leave it in tax, let's do the targeted relief. That's really necessary within this. So I know I ran through that. I know it's nothing new from what you've heard, you know, in the past. Is there additional things we want to say, or some different things that we want to say to our, to our three legislators tomorrow?
Well, I've been looking at all of these House bills that have been out here online, and it's just not just this bill. There's other House bills and Senate bills that will affect education drastically, so it could change the numbers even more than what you have here tonight.
Yeah. All the, all the property tax relief has a big impact on what can happen. Because the formula as it is assumes that the former property tax value plan is in place. Last week, Dan and Ellie met with Representative Byrd and Representative Schmidt at a legislative meeting with the Claremont County superintendents as well as treasurers. And so they got a chance to talk about some of these things. So we'll be able to go up and reiterate and to answer any of their questions. And I know when I last talked to Senator Johnson, he was curious about our school population and how it's changed. That was information he wanted, so we'll be able to share that. And today, Dan and I met with the Chamber of Commerce because their legislative advocacy, one of their top priorities is funding public schools, and we just want to give them a little more detail about fair school funding and how these bills are impacting us. So they're keeping a close watch on that and keeping their members updated. Because at this point, because we're in the middle of a bond issue, it complicates things because it adds to all the communication that needs to go out. But it would be really beneficial if people other than us were also talking to the legislators about and advocating for these things to put the district in the best possible position. So we're happy to help anybody with that. If we can create templates and help people with writing or communicating with their legislators, we're happy to do that. If anybody wants to reach out, we would support that. But I think, as I said, although it's a complicated time because we have a lot of topics in the air, this is significant for public education.
I would call it a drastic change in public education.
It is. It is drastic.
Yeah. Doing away with the, they're not doing away with the guarantees a hundred percent, but the writing's on the wall, right? I mean, when you start peeling that back in this first biennium, these first two years, you know that it's going to continue. And so chipping away at that is not at all to our advantage. And because we're so deep into that guarantee, you know, it, again, it's just really shifting that, if they reduce state funding, it shifts looking for additional funding locally. Okay? Or some other source. I mean, we continue to look at other sources, but we, the major sources are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to board comments. Ms. Spencer.
I don't really have, I'm looking forward to going up to Columbus tomorrow just to kind of see what their thoughts are on the funding. And I'm going to follow Dan's lead because I, I feel like I don't know that much about, but I do know that it's, it is chipping away at the kid's education, and it just doesn't seem like it's, it's, they don't act like they want it to work very well for most schools. And if they want us to pay for all of it, then stop asking us to do things. I don't know. I don't know. I'm not sure what the answer is either, but we will go up and we will do our best we can. And I would encourage all of the community to write their, Adam Byrd and Mr. Johnson and Jean Schmidt about the concerns that we have about the education and the funding.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Samborn?
I will reiterate that. I really think that it looks like there's a huge push on charter schools and homeschooling versus the students coming to a public school. And all of the, some of the upcoming House bills and Senate bills, I read that in the little short blurb, and I'm thinking, well, evidently the governor is pushing that, and that's not good. And so we really need to speak to him about considering all schools, not just charter schools and homeschooling. I think that that needs to be advocated in a big way. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the state of the schools. I went to that event. I had a wonderful time. Saw a lot of parents, a lot of students. Saw the Clough Pike children, did a phenomenal job singing that night. It was just a phenomenal group. I saw parents taking the information about the levy with them. I actually talked to mom and dad and two students as I was leaving the building, and she said, what do you think about this? And I said, we really need the money. We really do. And she's like, are you sure? And I said, well, I said, I'll tell you what. You read the information, and if you still have questions about it, you're more than welcome to talk with Superintendent Adams or Mr. Romano about your questions, and they'll get all your questions answered. They will meet with you whenever it's convenient for you. So I tried to, I'm trying to advocate that, you know, it is needed. I met Mr. Farmer. He's a phenomenal teacher. The kids were just blown away by the simulation that he was doing there. They were wanting to push all the buttons. He's like, no, no, don't push that button. So it was really nice to see all the parents and the students out. I really enjoyed the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Samborn. Mr. Chumley?
Hope everyone has an enjoyable St. Patrick's Day. Drink a green beverage for me. But the real holiday is coming up. Opening day next week, so that's what we're counting on. Hope everyone enjoys that. I know I will.
Mr. Rudy?
I want to congratulate Joe Stahl. I still call him Joey. I've known him since he was a toddler. He was a student of mine for two years. He traveled with me to Europe twice, the group, and I'm very, very excited to clock because I think he'll make a great addition. He's a clock alumnus. So that was really good news.
Thank you. The two going with Mrs. Adams and Mr. Romano, thank you for going and representing our district and advocating for, sorry, advocating for our district. This is a topic that definitely needs some attention brought to it as we move forward. It seems like they're wanting us to take away from us and put it on the community, which then becomes a struggle. So thank you guys for taking time tomorrow to do that. I personally appreciate that. I also want to recognize again the Momentum Awards to the two schools. Great job on that, guys. Keep, keep doing what you're doing and keep us moving forward. I definitely appreciate that. Just to reiterate, a couple important dates coming up. Again, as Adams has already said, but our next town hall is this Wednesday, March nineteenth, at six p.m. at Amelia Elementary. Again, it's open to the public, so please show up. If you have questions, comments, concerns, come learn what we're learning. And then our next board meeting is going to be April the seventh at seven p.m. at the Civic Center. Again, that is April seventh here at the Civic Center at seven p.m. So that's it for the public speak, or I'm sorry, I apologize, for the board comments. I went the wrong way. We do have a reason to go into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee, and to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against public employee, officials, licensee, or students. I will put that out in a form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. I assume there'd be no discussion?
Correct.
Mr. Romano will call, please.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Samborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Excuse me. Five yes?
And there is no, yeah, there's nothing that we're voting on, nothing, no decision being made. So thank you, guys.